Yeah.
Hi, Isabella. How are you? Do we need a motion to approve again?
Just reconvened.
Reconvened in the public session. We have a very full agenda of business tonight, so we're going to get right to it. We will be appointing our superintendent. We will be talking about a budget update, some curriculum, a new textbook. We're going to talk about how we continue our DEI conversation. And just a brief update on the independent investigation that has come to a conclusion. The board heard the investigator's report this week. And we are in the process of hearing from council on next steps. So, moving right to agenda item 3B. It's the board's pleasure to appoint Dr. Rachel Kelly as the next 12th superintendent of the Bronxville School. Should I read the resolution, Connie?
Hi, Connie. You're welcome to read it.
Well, I won't read the whole thing, except just to say that I think everyone in this room has seen our announcement, has read about our process. It's been a very full and robust process. And one where we've learned a lot about our district, as well as other districts. And we couldn't be more thrilled that we've come to this place unanimously. And so, with no further ado, shall we have a motion to approve? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a few quick words. It's not often someone has this opportunity, so give me a few minutes. I'm honored, I'm humbled to be appointed by this Board of Education as your 12th superintendent of the Bronxville School. When I was initially appointed as interim superintendent from January to this June, I had not applied for the permanent superintendency, given I loved every aspect of being your assistant superintendent. It wasn't until I actually began the interim role in January that I realized that this is precisely what I should be doing. I'm so grateful that the board was willing to accept my candidacy so late in their very comprehensive search process. The Bronxville School is quite an extraordinary place. The students are remarkable, the teachers are experts in the field, the staff is caring, the parents, the PTA, and the Bronxville School Foundation couldn't be any more supportive and generous of our efforts. The entire Bronxville School team will continue to work hard on behalf of all of your children. We are a dedicated and committed group of educators who believe in the Bronxville Promise, and we will help ensure that our students, your children, are fully prepared for their next chapters upon graduation, both academically and socially, emotionally. Look for my next video tomorrow morning. And I also appreciate the outpouring of support I've received today. I very much look forward to our continued partnerships. Thank you.
All right. What a way to start the meeting. Our next agenda item is to approve the minutes from January 19th and January 27th. We have a motion to approve. All in favor? Motion carries. Yeah, the promise-only slides. We're going to put some slides up on the screen here, and I'll get to them in just a second. Okay. Give me one second. Let's place my page. Yeah, well, I can probably remember from this one. So, in December, we may recall that Dr. Manasano had presented the results of the advisory committee process. And what he presented was that, you know, there was no consensus out of that committee or out of that group on whether there should be a separate policy or a statement. There was agreement, however, on the Bronxville Promise and how it reflected what we all wish for students. We do acknowledge the feedback that we received at that December meeting about the desire for more participation, and we want to be responsive to that. And so, we do want to announce tonight that we would like to hold some workshops after the break. On Monday, February 27th, it's a Monday night, 7:00. And for those for whom that's not convenient, we'd also like to offer a second opportunity on Saturday, March 4th, after the budget workshop, so that one would be around 10:30. You know, one of the things, we've been doing a lot of thinking since the December meeting, a lot of reading, a lot of kind of research in this area. And we wanted to understand a little bit better, you know, the Bronxville Promise in particular, and the language in the expanded version of the promise, which is the outcomes. And, you know, I think we've all learned that there's a lot of language in the expanded version that not all of us were familiar with. And if not all of us board members were familiar with it, we wonder if we could do a better job of communicating it to the community. So, we wanted to start tonight by doing that here. And we'll do it again at those workshops. We'll talk about some other topics at those workshops, too. But we do want to do more listening and hear from the community and those who haven't had an op, feel they haven't had an opportunity to participate. So, the Bronxville Promise, we have learned, contains three, really three elements. There are the original, what are referred to as dispositions, that were developed in 2014 with input from teachers, students, administrators, and parents. They are four original statements on leadership, innovation, critical thinking, and engaged leadership. Most of us who've been in the school for a while are very familiar with those four areas. Five years later, in 2019, the outcomes were developed. And, you know, this is information that, you know, our faculty and staff is very, very familiar with. We, the board, less familiar. And it's a set of materials that I know the advisory committee considered, but we were less familiar with, and so we've been becoming more familiar. The outcomes were an additional level of detail that was developed for curriculum design and to help measure student achievement of the Bronxville Promise. So, after we developed the original dispositions, we've learned from Mara and others that the faculty and the staff needed to understand how to design curriculum around achievement of the promise and develop these outcomes. And then there was this additional piece developed, I believe, around the same time as the outcomes, called "The Heart of the Promise," sometimes called "The Center of the Promise." And these are social, emotional characteristics that are common to all of the dispositions of the Bronxville Promise. So, let's go to the next page. So, again, the dispositions, most of us who've been in the school for a while are very familiar with those. We see them on our website, we see them in other places. I know, once you get to the high school, there are awards for these dispositions that students get, and students, you know, have projects also that are focused on these dispositions. So, let's go to the next page. Then there's the outcomes document. So, I'm sure no one can read this, but I just wanted to put a snapshot up of how you can see there are four quadrants, and in each of the quadrants, there's expanded language for each of those original four dispositions. And so, the next slides are going to kind of explode each of those quadrants, so we can actually read them. So, leadership, leading is acting and inspiring others to work toward a positive outcome. So, in developing these outcomes, our faculty and staff decided that what this means is that our students will be compassionate, courageous, and show humility. And the highlighting is mine, but, you know, as I went through these, and the board has reviewed this as well, but as I initially went through these outcomes, there was language that kind of popped out at me that was, you know, reflected DEI values. Move to the next one. Engaged citizenship, becoming informed, acting to make an impact in small and large ways. Students will be empowered and empathetic. And what do we mean by empathetic? They'll show respect for diversity and understand someone's situation without judgment. Critical thinking, students will be able to analyze, evaluate, and synthesize. And as they evaluate, determine bias, relevance, and accuracy. And finally, innovation. Students will be able to use design thinking, creative processes, and be risk takers. And in design thinking and creative processes, be able to empathize. In other words, to try to understand the ideas, the perspectives of people not like us, someone different than us. And then at the center of the promise, these are the social and emotional learning characteristics that were felt to be common to all of the dispositions. Open-mindedness, collaboration, to be reflective, have grit, and to be well. So, we just wanted to, tonight, kind of call attention to this expanded language because, you know, we've come to appreciate, as we've tried to prepare ourselves for the continuing this conversation, we've come to appreciate that there is a lot to the promise that I think it's important for all of us as a community to better understand as we go into the workshops. So, we ask, and we'll put out some communication about this. We ask that when people attend the workshops, that there be priority given to those who feel they haven't had an opportunity yet to give feedback to the board. And to please just attend one or the other, but not both. The objective really will be for the board to do listening. It's not intended to be a forum for community members to debate us or to debate each other. But we do want to hear from those who feel that they haven't had an opportunity to participate. So, that is kind of our teaser for the workshops. We hope, if you're interested, that you will consider attending. And I think that will do it for me.
Great. Thank you, Susan. I want to just spend a few minutes, I mean, we've already had such a highlight to this meeting, but there are a few others that I want to point out from the three schools. In the high school, I mean, I could speak hours about our athletic teams, specifically both the boys and girls indoor track and field teams. Both teams won the league championships. Twenty-nine athletes were awarded the title "All League," which means they came in first in their event at the league championships. Both teams won section championships. Both teams came in second at Westchester County Championships. And three relays qualified for the Milrose Games. Both boys and girls broke Bronxville School indoor track records this season in seven different events. And close to 30 athletes have qualified for nationals across 15 events. So, again, you know, congratulations to those coaches, those student athletes. Incredible. Also, our community thoroughly enjoyed our high school production of "Hello, Dolly" this past weekend. It was a magnificent presentation of talent and was just a lot of fun. And then also in the high school, we just completed the first round, if you will, of National History Day with our ninth and 10th graders. And we had an incredible presentation yesterday by the students. And it was so nice to be able to welcome parents into the building to be a part of that for the first time in several years. In the middle school, the faculty have been working with N-RSC, our design thinking, to plan strategically with a focus on advancing and reimaging our middle school advisory program. Also, students in the middle school are hard at work preparing for science Olympiad. Both middle school and high school clubs have come together to collect products to be shipped to Turkey for their relief efforts. Also, of course, some fun in the middle school. The sixth graders around midterm time went ice skating, and the seventh and eighth graders enjoyed some bowling. The elementary school faculty is also working with N-RSC. Their design thinking team consists of 13 teachers. All six curriculum leaders are involved in that, as well as teachers across disciplines, from technology to special education. They are spending time this week to begin ideation and synthesis of change ideas, and then ideation prototyping on the second half of the week. The team has done a full analysis on where they are in the process, keeping the users in mind and facilitating thinking maps around identifying felt needs for change and mapping out next steps and testing prototypes. So, a lot of excitement going on around the district.
Hi, everyone. Good to be back a little bit. But there's a lot going on, especially this week for Valentine's Day. This huge day, the SOFL did their annual Candy Grams event, sort of. It takes a lot of organization. Basically, we put together little envelopes and collect messages from your friends across the high school and package them together with like a little candy bag and give that to everyone in the school. It's a lot of work, but people really enjoy it. The Autism Awareness Club hosted like a Valentine's Day scavenger hunt. We had a freshman transition activity for it, which is a program the leaders actually met recently to work on improvements for the program next year. We also, the senior class officers and the class moms organized a very nice senior faculty-teacher appreciation lunch this week. Like you mentioned, we had "Hello, Dolly" last weekend. The juniors are actually hosting a volleyball tournament tonight, so if you see like a mass exodus of kids walking out of the gym, that's what's going on. NHG Projects, like you mentioned, I've been through that. It's a lot, it's very demanding and basically an entire semester of work. So, Bronxville Kids always put a lot of hard work into that, and it's nice to see it getting displayed. Clubs have been pretty active. Like you mentioned, Mala UN and Tassel and International Service Club have been collecting donations and materials for relief in Turkey and Syria. Winners' squads are headed off into their championship seasons, playoffs for basketball, and track just went to Milrose, which is like, kind of like the Super Bowl for a high school track, so. And, oh, and last month, we just got past our midterms week, which was a lot of kids' first, like, real midterms week ever. I like to just forget it ever happened. But, yeah, and then we have February break coming up, so. I think this quarter goes by really fast, but that's my update today.
Thank you.
Oh, no. I'm okay. I'm not really dressed for this.
You've grown the calendar now.
Okay, so, tonight, this month is the second look at the 23-24 calendar. We looked at it together last month. Between last month and this month, the board and I have only received positive feedback, probably because we were able to include two weeks at the winter break. So, just not a lot of complaining about this proposed calendar. So, I think if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And we will be looking for the board to approve next year's calendar.
Any questions? Motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I want to see it from down here.
It's a new superintendent sticking up for space. She's wielding her power already.
Okay, so let us continue with the personnel agenda. The first item, I just want to take a moment to point out to everyone that our very own Christine Dowd is going to be appointed this evening as our Director of Pupil Personnel Services. She has stepped up to be able to take on the responsibilities that I had had as assistant superintendent as it relates to all aspects of special education, support services, psychology, and health. And I can't think of a better person to take that on. She has been here in the district as a master teacher for over 17 years. And I think we will really benefit from her expertise in the field. So, that's our first motion for this evening. Maybe we'll want to do that one separately.
Sure. So, we're going to vote on item A, right? In the personnel items? Item A. Do we have a motion to approve? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations.
And then a few more items before the board this evening. We have a teaching assistant eligible for a medical leave. And then we have two leave replacements. One for a teacher medical leave and the other for the teaching assistant. We have a new teacher aide. You may recall that we had a resignation last month, and we were able to find a replacement. In addition, we have two salary adjustments, which the board has been apprised of prior. And again, this is to assist me and my role as continuing the responsibilities of human resources as superintendent. In addition, we have a change to the co-curricular stipends, as well as a new modified baseball coach, and three revisions to the spring coaches roster for this year. Happy to take any questions on those.
Questions? So, we're approving items B through J. Do you have a motion? Second? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. And... Go on to Dan.
The board is in receipt of the financial report for the month of January. So, as we close the seventh month of the fiscal year and are halfway through the academic year, I'm going to repeat the same mantra I've been repeating for about the last three months or so. Things are a little tight on the expenditure side. And we're doing really well on the revenue side. Right now, I'm predicting a surplus of about $1 million, roughly. Usually, it usually goes up from here, but at this point, I think it's 50/50. If it stays at $1 million, it goes slightly down or slightly up from here. But we're in good stead in heading into the budget, you know, discussions for next year. Happy to answer any questions?
The expenditure side pressures you talked about are mostly just inflationary, general items, maintenance, other issues like that. Nothing extraordinary.
No, exactly. You know, we, when we put the budget to bed last year, you know, it took a lot of work getting under the cap and because there were some revenue adjustments and also some, mostly revenue issues that we had to deal with. And just to get under the cap, I couldn't address all the inflation issues I saw coming for this year. So, a lot of those are in the budget for next year, as you learned last two Saturdays ago. But we're in decent shape, you know, thanks mostly to the revenues.
Can you remind me for the incident that just came up, that we have an emergency resolution for tonight?
Yes.
Where is that budgeted?
Our maintenance budget, we have a decent amount every year for building operations and maintenance and building repairs.
We have sufficient budget.
Yeah. We still have a decent amount left. You know, I could be here next month asking for an increase, but we don't feel that's necessary yet. You know, the jackhammers don't hit the ground until Friday afternoon, so, you know, that could all change over the weekend.
And we don't know yet whether it will be worth an insurance claim?
That would not be an insurance claim, I don't believe. You know, an old sewer pipe that collapsed. You know, I don't think it would merit an insurance claim. I'll run it by the insurance company, but...
I feel like we all get solicited in Bronxville by the water company for the sewer line coverage.
I'll run it by them, but, you know, if there's a claim there, we'll take it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And we have some financial action items?
Yes. Yes, we have a few. We have an anonymous telescope donation that was really born out of our participation with NASA last month. You know, the community got real excited, and they offered pony up a telescope, which is, you know, worth a lot of money.
Really generous.
So, we'll take it. We also have a textbook disposal. You know, the board is required, when we're disposing of a textbook for any reason, in this case, it's just because it's outdated. It's 2008, you know, 15, 16 years old. Replacing, hopefully to be replaced by another volume, the board has reviewed. But we, the board is required to declare them, you know, surplus or no longer an item we want. If we can, we'll donate them to anybody who wants them. If not, they go in the dumpster. And then we have an Off-Cycle Foundation Grant. I wonder, what is AI Boot Camp? You know, artificial intelligence boot camp. You may want to explain that one, Anne, but it sounds exciting. It's an opportunity for seniors specifically before a program starts up.
Yeah, so we have this year an independent study that's running all year, teaching students AI through a foundation grant with an organization where the teachers are Stanford, MIT, Columbia graduate students, and artificial intelligence. We sort of came up with an idea that we might be able to offer this to our seniors during senior shadowing, since they need to log hours. since they need to log hours. So, this is just a grant to allow about 25 to 30 seniors a two-week intro to AI. That the seniors learn more about it in March. I'll be sharing with the seniors in March. But this will allow us to bring actually a Columbia AI graduate students, graduate student or two, we might be two classes, to the school to teach in-person the intro to AI, three hours a day for two weeks.
That's great, really generous of the foundation. So, how, anything further, Dan, or should we vote?
No, I think that would be...
Any questions?
A through C?
Items A through C, the telescope, the textbook disposal, and the AI Boot Camp. Could we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much to the foundation and to the donor of the telescope.
And, you know, a couple Saturdays ago, we had a workshop where we spoke about and reviewed the proposed budget for about three hours, and I let the board know that I thought we'd be able to get under the cap, and I thought that, you know, I'd be able to get back with them with a response for some questions that they had. So, we answered those immediately, and then, you know, the then interim superintendent and I got to work on trying to get under the cap, and you'll see the result of that in these slides. So, if you want to go to slide number two, Connie? Yeah, this is where we are in the process. We're getting towards the end. We, I would expect we could adopt the budget at the March meeting. As I mentioned, we're under the cap, and, you know, we are going to be ready for a referendum in May. Next slide, please. Happened a couple of days ago. This is where we were at the end of last Saturday. Our tax levy percentage increase was at 2.96%. We have some further information. Our final tax cap, I believe at the time it was at 2.29, it's now at 2.33, with all the information that's come in since then. Specifically, we were waiting for our building aid figure. The budget was over the cap at that point by about $287,000, where the cap calculates now. Next slide. So, we needed about $287,000 or more to get under the tax levy cap. And, you know, our superintendent got busy reorganizing, and through one of the moves, which you just approved, a few of them, we saw some responsibilities taking over as far as some of the new superintendent's old responsibilities, and with that, we were able to actually eliminate an administrative position that was in next year's budget. And with that, and the corresponding benefits that go along with that position, also accounting for increased compensation for either promotions or new responsibilities for other people, we're seeing a net savings from that move of almost $210,000. And then, aside from that, we got some good news with our teacher retirement system numbers. And coupled with the benefit adjustments from the salary savings, that's another almost $100,000 worth of savings. So, combined, those get us to about $17,000 under the cap. Next slide, please. And these were the impact on the levy lines that were changed by those moves. So, the thing that's impacting the tax levy the most is differences in salaries from one year to the other, and you can see our teacher retirement system funding is actually down because the final rate came in at 9.76% versus our original budget of 10%, which was at the top of the range, and everything else stayed about the same. So, here's where we sit now. Our proposed budget is about $52.66 million, with a tax levy of $46,590,950, and that's a tax levy increase of 2.29% compared to a cap of 2.33%, which puts us under the cap by $16,712. And that's where we are. We weren't lying when we said we thought we could reach it.
Looks good, Dan, thank you. Any questions? Okay. We were going to have, when are we going to have the report on the capital needs? Was that...
That's going to be at the next board meeting. I have Lynn already scheduled to be at the next board meeting. I was going to do that in my facilities update.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
So, moving on to the facilities update, the training room reconstruction is complete. And so, I was down there yesterday, and our trainer is extremely happy to be out of her closet, which she shared with an ice machine. The ice machine is now out of there, and, you know, there's room for our new furniture that is going to be coming in decently, which was donated by the foundation, which we're obviously very grateful for. Our five-year plan is completed, which we were just talking about, and Lynn, who is our consulting architect, is scheduled to present at a full board in March. As we alluded to a little earlier, we had a sanitary line blockage, which might be a collapse, because when we sent in the camera, we saw, you know, ferrocks and all that stuff. So, Friday afternoon, we're going to jackhammer the kindergarten hallway where we know where the blockage is. And as I alluded to before, we don't really know what we're going to find down there. So, we have, we think we know, but we're hoping that it's just a blockage or a collapse, and we clean it up, put a cap on it and all that, and we have enough time, if it's a simple fix, to get it done and re-tiled before school starts the following Monday after break. If not, the board will be notified right away, and, you know, if one thing our students have proven to us over the last 15 years is they are resilient and they can roll with punches. But at this point, we don't think we have to relocate everybody. They've been very accommodating, because there were no toilets or sinks available in the kindergarten classrooms for the last week. So, a lot of running down the hallways. But there we go. I'll let you know what we find when we open it up. And that's it.
Okay.
I do have one facilities action item, which is the emergency resolution. Emergency resolution is necessary because this work is going to be done within a week of when we found the problem, and we don't have time to go out and competitively bid the work and vet a contractor. So, we want to find somebody we know who can work fast. It's actually a contractor who's been involved in every one of our contracts, has been, then either won the plumbing or the HVAC bid on every contract since the flood reconstruction. So, they're good, they're fast, and, you know, they've been doing the right thing for Bronxville for the last 15 years, so I wouldn't want anybody else tackling this job in such a short period of time.
Okay.
So, that's what the resolution is for. It authorizes us basically to do this work quick without going out...
Without a bid, yeah. Any questions? We have a motion to approve. All in favor? Did you need to say anything about the fire safety report?
It's a notice, yeah.
What's that? Yeah. Yeah, it's just notice that it's on file and we're compliant and...
Okay, the CEO has something to issue.
Yes.
And then we have some trips.
Yes, we have, we're adjusting the girls' lacrosse trip by a day from April 1st to April 5th, and the, from what was previously approved, and the annual squash trip to Nationals in Philadelphia, which they do each February. You know, squash, there's no leagues or sectionals. Their big thing every year is going to Nationals. So, since that's out of state, we'd like them to be insured.
Yep.
So, the board needs to approve it.
Okay, any questions on the trips? Motion to approve? Pete, second, Eddie, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then we have special ed contracts as a matter of routine approval that is usually done and will be done at the reorganization meeting every year.
This allows the board and the superintendent to enter into contracts. This is specifically for Bronxville students who need to be educated elsewhere. It's still the responsibility of the Committee on Special Education. This year, we have four students who are educated out of district, and so this allows the authorization of those special education contracts with those other schools.
Are these, those I did earlier in the year, so this authorizes me on behalf of the board to sign those contracts?
Right, and you may have also, in the beginning of the year, signed contracts of students from other districts who attend our special classes.
Yes.
So, it goes both ways.
Okay.
We want to make sure that they're all appropriately approved.
Yeah. Any questions about that? All right, motion to approve? Jen, second? Pete, all in favor?
Next item is a negotiated legal settlement, for which the board has been apprised of in executive session, and then a new textbook approval, which I alluded to before, to replace the ones we're discarding.
Okay, one at a time. And we've had our questions addressed, involves a particular student, so we wouldn't address questions about that here in the public session. We talked about this in executive session, so I'd like just a motion to approve. Second? All in favor? And then the textbook approval. And the curriculum committee has reviewed the new textbook?
No.
Okay, and this is a history book? Does it replace the one that we're getting rid of?
A little bigger, it's got 15 years more information in it.
This is the one we're getting rid of? As you can see in the front, you can download the electronic version to your iPod. And this is the new one, and it is world history, and it aligns with New York State standards, which is basically the ancient world.
Okay, sounds good. Seems like it's time.
Yes, and they use it generally as a resource, and our plan is to purchase physical copies for class sets, but also purchase digital copies for every student, so they don't have to lug these giant items around. And they're very equipped now with digital texts due to their COVID experience.
Yeah. Any further questions for the curriculum committee? A motion to approve, please? Pete, second, from Jen, all in favor? Motion carries. And I believe we've gotten through this very full agenda. Just a reminder again, we'll have a workshop on Monday, the 27th, at 7:00 PM to continue the DEI conversation. We'll do it again on Saturday, March 4th, after the budget workshop at 10:30. Thursday, March 16th is our next regular meeting, and we're now at the time for public comment. So, just a reminder, anyone who wishes to comment publicly, we ask that you please identify yourself, that you, you know, be relatively brief, so that others have an opportunity to comment as well. And is there anyone, Connie, in TV land?
No, not that I can see. Brad's got it now.
Oh, sorry. Well, okay, well, everyone knows where to find us, if anything pops into their minds after the meeting, but with that, then can we have a motion to adjourn? Michael, second?
Jen.
Jen or Eddie? All in favor? Motion carries, meeting is over.